Of April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to order. May we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we did it. Excellent. Amy, can you, will you call the roll, please?
Think you're on mute, Amy.
Amy.
Sorry about that. Commissioner Budnick?
Here in Austin, Texas.
Oh.
Commissioner Perry?
Here in Pleasant Ridge.
Commissioner Scott?
Here in Pleasant Ridge.
Commissioner Wall?
Here in Pleasant Ridge.
Mayor Metzger?
Here in Pleasant Ridge. Okay. First item on the agenda is public discussion. Any items that are not on the agenda, if anyone wants to come forward and bring any issues to our attention? Any hands going up? Nobody's raising a hand? We got nothing? Okay.
I said, we have nothing.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, just to make, just to make sure. Okay, moving on, then we go to governmental reports. Let's start with the chief.
Good evening, everybody. Just a couple items. April is distracted driver awareness month. I'd like just take a couple minutes to talk about. It's a very important topic. We've all seen people of all ages on their phones while operating a motor vehicle, I'm sure. I see more when I'm off duty than on duty. They, the highway safety division in the state put out some flyers and stuff and wanted people to be made aware. So if you bear with me a little bit, I'm gonna give you some stats and just a couple brief sentences here. So state and local law enforcement agencies joined forces around the country the week of April eighth to twelfth to intensify enforcement of state and local texting and distracted driving laws and to raise awareness about the dangers and legal implications of distracted driving. It's an annual campaign as part of the Department of Transportation's National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. You drive, you text, you pay, and high visibility enforcement effort that ran from April eighth to April twelfth. Some brief facts, according to the Michigan State Police Criminal Justice Information Center here in Michigan in two thousand and nineteen, there were eighteen thousand and ninety-six distracted driving crashes. That's eighteen thousand, over eighteen thousand crashes in two thousand and nineteen. And those crashes resulted in over seventy fatalities. Nationwide in two thousand and nineteen, that number of fatalities linked to driver distraction was three thousand one hundred and forty-two, or almost nine percent of all fatalities for that year. This also included five hundred and sixty-six non-occupants of vehicles, which were pedestrians, bicyclists, and others killed in crashes involving a distracted driver. Over the years, millennials have become some of the biggest texting while driving offenders, also using their cell phones to talk and scroll through social media while behind the wheel. According to the National Highway Traffic Safety Association, young drivers sixteen to twenty-four years old have been observed using handheld electronic devices at higher rates than older drivers since two thousand and seven. In fact, in two thousand and nineteen, and that's the most recent data, that's why I keep going to two thousand and nineteen, nine percent of people killed in teen driving crashes, ages fifteen to nineteen, died when teen drivers were distracted at the time of the crash. And it's also found that female drivers were more at risk for being involved in a fatal crash involving a distracted driver. And every day we ticket drivers who haven't gotten the message that using their cell phones while they drive is illegal, and it puts other road users at risk. We all know the dangers associated with this, whether, even whether it's eating or drinking behind the wheel, using the GPS, or talking to other vehicle passengers, or using the cell phones. It's all dangerous when you're driving. So the police are determined to impress upon these drivers that you keep your hands on the wheel and the eyes on the road. Just some brief safety tips to put your phone down when you get behind the wheel. If you need to text, then pull over and don't drive. If you're driving and you expect a text or a phone call, pull over and park your car in a safe location. And once you're safely off the road and parked, it's safe to text or answer the call. If you have passengers in your car, you could designate a passenger as a designated texter and allow them access to your phone to respond to calls or messages. Don't engage in social media scrolling while messaging or driving. And we all know that cellphone use can be habit forming. Struggling to not text and drive, put the cellphone out of reach in the trunk, the glove box, or the backseat until you arrive at your destination. Again, texting while driving is dangerous and illegal. Try to break that cycle and know that the police are always looking for distracted drivers. So all this month, efforts are made to make people more aware of that. Any questions about that? Oh, I also have stat sheets, Mr. Mayor. You're a stat numbers guy. So if you'd like, I could email those to you that were provided to me.
Please do.
Look at the excitement. Look at the excitement. Any questions about that? Okay, good. Moving on. Second topic. In June of two thousand and twenty, President Donald Trump, oh, I gotta find the right form. Signed an executive order that required all state, local, and executive law enforcement agencies be certified by an independent credentialing agency to be certified in their use of force policy. The Michigan Associate Chiefs of Police, better known as MACP, has been identified as the credentialing body for all Michigan agencies. The order that President Trump signed requires that agencies meet two standards for successful credentialing. One, that an agency's use of force policies prohibit chokeholds, except in situations only where the use of deadly force is allowed by law. And two, that that agency's use of force policies adhere to all applicable federal, state, and local laws. Two ultimate objectives of this credentialing process. First was to foster community trust in the outstanding department that you know works for you. Second, certification is a prerequisite to any law enforcement's agency's ability to, for Department of Justice discretionary grant funding. So it should be known that not all agencies were required to have their use of force policy certified. However, the MACP was urging all agencies to seek that certification on their use of force policy, even if we weren't seeking federal funds. It allows departments to inform their community that their use of force directive meets DOJ requirements that are a result of the president's executive order on safe policing and safe communities. So the Pleasant Ridge Police Department has always had a policy or procedure manual in place. In fact, here, it sits close by at hand. Always handy. It's rather thick. It's not just on use of force, but it's everything that guides how we do business in Pleasant Ridge Police Department. When I became the chief in October of two thousand and fourteen, I took on the task of reviewing every policy procedure and tried to revise where we could or make things better. This is also done annually by myself and Sergeant Reed. In any effort that we can see that needs revision is needed. Sometimes it is incidents that have been going on nationally here now for some time or locally occur, those policies and procedures and training need to be reviewed and revised. Recent events over the past year have dictated the rethinking of how we as police officers conduct ourselves, especially when dealing with the public, especially when the situation evolves into a possible confrontational contact where now some type of force is implemented. We've had a use of force form in place. It's more of a check-the-box form and everything that gets sent to the FBI, who require this data annually to disseminate to agencies for grants and funding and things like that. And they want the numbers just so they can trend and see what we need to do better. After the George Floyd incident, I was President Trump recognized a need for law enforcement to change their policies, procedures, and training in regards to the use of force, particularly in the area of chokeholds. Hence, that executive order that he signed. So in July of two thousand and twenty, I and other chiefs in the area, as well as across the country, obviously began to look over our use of force policy and begin the process of how we could make ours better. Ours was good, but as things happen, you realize that things could be done better. Many, many, many hours of obviously reading, research, conversations with other chiefs, other agencies, what transpires every day in the news that we see, and recommendations by the Michigan Municipal League and the Michigan Risk Management Association. Based on their guidelines and what they suggest, a policy was presented to the Michigan Associate Chiefs of Police from the Pleasant Ridge Police Department for credentialing. So this evening, I'm happy to announce that in my hand here, that on April eleventh, so just a couple days ago, when we received this, the MACP certified the Pleasant Ridge Police Department's use of force policy. So I'll just read one of the paragraphs. The city manager has a copy and he can have that available or myself if you want it for review. But it dictates how you can apply for grant funding and stuff like that. And that this, their credentialing of our policy grants us the ability to apply for grants for three years. And then after three years, it'd be reviewed and stuff again. So following our review, we determined that the Pleasant Ridge Police Department meets the conditions for certification. Accordingly, the Michigan Associate Chiefs of Police will include the Pleasant Ridge Police Department going forward within our database of certified law enforcement agencies. On or before January first of each year, will provide the name of each certified law enforcement agency to the U.S. Department of Justice. These certifications will be valid for a three-year period and will need to be renewed accordingly to that schedule. Just wanted to say that it was a arduous process to get them to agree to things. Language had to be tweaked, things had to be changed. Again, there in particular to chokeholds and how they were implemented. So having said that, proud of the efforts, know that we take this seriously. Obviously, being smaller, we don't have the contacts that a lot of bigger agencies have. We still do have contacts, though, and the ability to have that is there. But know that our officers have been reminded. They, there's an annual review of policies and procedures, not just this one, but all of them. They sign that they read it and understood it, and they are reviewed by a supervisor like myself or Sergeant Reed on an annual basis, just so we know that we're conscious of how we do our job and how we want to conduct business professionally. Questions?
Congratulations on that. I'm glad to hear. I do, I do have a question. I'm not, this is not on chokeholds. And I'm not asking for you to give judgment. But could you just tell us a little bit how the Pleasant Ridge Police deal with their gun and their taser?
So I actually had it out a second ago. Let me, give me one second. I can grab it.
We've lost him. He's disappeared.
Come back.
No.
Okay, so obviously, a, so we carry Glock seventeen, which is a nine-mill, nine-millimeter caliber weapon. It's made of polymer and steel, fully loaded. It weighs approximately thirty-four to thirty-seven ounces. It looks like you've seen, obviously, in the, in the video. Very different looking than
Taser.
Taser. It looks like this. This has a flashlight attached or whatever, but clearly a firearm. Like that. The taser is the Pleasant Ridge Police Department carry. And this is a model that we distinctly ordered because of the way it looks and its color. It's yellow. There's a cartridge attached to the front. There's a battery in it. This weighs maybe ten ounces. Very light, very distinct, very differently. The use of the different colors, many agencies carry a taser that's black. We go with yellow, so it's distinctive. We also carry less lethal shotguns. They're orange stocked in color. And the ammo is kept separately from that, so as not to, if you had to use less lethal, whether it's like a beanbag round, rubber bullet, or things like that, that's clearly identifiable to as being different than a, than a real firearm. So it does look different. It feels different. How you carry it is different. Some people carry it on a vest, like in a cross draw. For longest time, you were trained from the police academy that you carried opposite hand of your firearm. So if you're right-handed, the taser is on your left side.
The left side.
So you knew to pull it out of your holster with the left hand, and it was in your left hand. So to keep your weapon hand free or your strong, usually that's your strong hand and you use it for other things. Over the years, that's changed a little bit. People modify. They take things. We have a lot of things on our belt. It's heavier. As, as you get older, as I found myself, I got older, less weight on your belt, there's less weight on your hips and your back. So they're putting them on vests and things like that. Clearly, training comes into this. And without being judgmental, because we're not there, and even though it's a video, the video doesn't always maybe clearly say, but it is distinctly different. And when we train with that, you know that. And as somebody would be yelling, if you're gonna deploy, you're supposed to yell, "Taser, taser, taser", to warn other people in the area, get out of the way because it's, it's coming. Or to let the person know that whatever their behavior they're doing, or they're they're not complying with your order to put their hands behind their back or get on the ground or something like that, it gives them the opportunity to still comply. Nobody wants to shoot. I don't know of any officer that wants to be involved in a shooting, especially in today's day and age, or rather tase somebody, whatever. The taser obviously is an option, so has not to use deadly force and to get somebody to comply if they're not. Training comes into it big time. We will go over, obviously, like I said before, policies and events. Events happen that make us change our policies and our training. So we will be reviewing ours, and we have already, and many times we've discussed with every agency around and within ourselves, to remind ourselves as to how we do business again. Does that help you?
Yeah, it does. I mean, it's, you know, that's kind of what, what I'd heard. And it's, you know, as far as the dominant hand and the dominant side and the other side. And the fact that they are so different, but no, just wanted to check. I'm not gonna.
And it, it is tragic. And like I said, Mr. Mayor, and commissioners, and city manager, and anybody else listening, I don't know any officer, they come to work and they want to make a difference and try to help people. With that comes contacts with people that sometimes don't want to be taken into custody or things like that, and things escalate. Obviously, if people would comply with what the officers tell them, then it wouldn't lead maybe to escalation of violence and use of force and things like that. Everybody has a different maybe opinion of that and stuff, but you can, everything's recorded pretty much by everybody, whether on a cellphone, a body cam, a car camera. And you can have your day in court if you were wronged. And I think that's the message really that we have to keep propagating is, you know, even if, if the officers are wrong, then they'll, that will come out in court or at a later date, and they'll either be terminated or just, you know, brought to justice in the court system. But this constant violence that is always erupting at these scenes and things like that have led to all these forceful confrontations. And, you know, it's unfortunate when anybody gets hurt or killed in a situation like this. So know that the police are, that take this seriously when things like this happen. We can't Monday morning quarterback every situation. That's done later, and then that's why policies and procedures are changed.
Thanks. Thank you. Are there any other questions for the chief?
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I think, is Shawnee, right? Hi, Shawnee.
Yeah, we have Shawnee here, but you know what? We also have Chief Robinson from Ferndale. I don't know if she has anything to say. Might be better to let her go before Shawnee gets.
Sure, I'm sorry. I didn't see her. I didn't see her there. My mistake.
I'm kind of stealthy like that. Hi, Mayor. How are you?
Fine.
So good evening, everybody. I apologize for missing the last meeting. Schedule's kind of crazy, still settling in, but glad to be here tonight. So just want to tell you, things have been pretty quiet as far as fire department EMS services into Pleasant Ridge, which is good. That means the less our people are seeing us in emergency, the better the community is, right? So a couple of things you may see if you see our firefighters around is they are supporting Autism Awareness Month. You'll see them wearing t-shirts with the colors on it, and that was something that the firefighters brought to me, which I think shows the heart of the men and women on our fire department, that they truly care about the members of the community, that they bring this stuff to me and are leading this. So they do have autism t-shirts on. They'll be wearing them all month, and they actually are participating in autism training this week. The other thing I want to bring out as we go into, oh, and they are supporting Team Guts, if you guys are familiar with that organization. So it's amazing, like this all stuff they did on their own and kind of just looped me in on it. So I have great men and women working for me. The only other thing I want to bring out for safety reasons, we're getting to that time of year where everybody's starting projects and you might start excavating their bigger projects. And just encourage everybody, if you're gonna be digging, if there's gonna be any digging on any of your projects, call eight-one-one first. And we really want to prevent avoidable gas leak emergencies that could get very expensive for you, but also dangerous for those in the area. So if there's gonna be any digging on any projects at your home or on properties or businesses, just call eight-one-one first, get it staked out, ensure that digging can be done safely so we can all stay safe and save you some mics. If you are fond of fall for gas leak, I'm sure that gets really expensive, and we want to just keep everybody safe. So something really simple to do, so. But I appreciate everybody, glad to be here, and I always, I kind of look forward to all the information I can get out of these meetings. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions? It was good, it was good advice, and I'm glad to hear that you haven't been visiting our city too often of late.
Thank you so much.
But you can certainly come on non-emergency calls anytime.
Absolutely. So as all this COVID has done, I would love to come visit and sit with a lot of you guys and have kind of face-to-face introductions. So just let me know whenever you're ready.
One of these days.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. No questions? Okay. Thank you again. Moving on. Now is it Shawnee's turn? Let's see. I'm looking. I don't see. I don't think we have any other. Shawnee, I'm gonna ask you to go ahead.
Yeah, you ready for me to go ahead and go ahead and get started? Yeah, okay. Sounds good. Then I will go ahead and just give a few stats. So as many of you may have noticed, the aquatic source truck was at the community center a couple times last week, which is some really good progress. I know I see a couple of familiar faces on there, and I know we're friends on Facebook, and you saw some fun pictures of me on the pool deck last week. So that was an exciting professional day, probably the most exciting day I've had in the year. So it was a fun day for Greg and I to be on the pool deck. It was a sunny day, which makes it that much better. So we had a beautiful week for it last week. The pool is not green anymore, so that is great. I'm gonna share a couple pictures here, so I'm gonna get into my presentation. I'm gonna screen share here. Okay, so here are a couple great photos. As you can see here, the water was green. That's what it looks like after we took off the cover after a good year and a half of it being on. And the other photos are from, pictures from that same day and over the next several days. And as you can tell, the water and the pool surface looks amazing. Beautiful rainbow that was, I believe, on Wednesday or Thursday of last week, the day that we got a little bit of sprinkles. The water features are on, as you can see there, water on the deck. You can see the outline, the blue chairs. I'll show some great pictures of those here in a few minutes, too. But that is the new pool furniture that we got at the beginning of what would have been the two thousand and twenty pool season that never happened. But that's what that furniture will look like, and there's more to come. So I know there's lots of questions on what this upcoming season will look like. I don't have a definite answer yet. We are still waiting for more information to come and to follow from Oakland County Health Department and with the advice from the state of Michigan. What we do know is at an operating capacity of fifty percent, the maximum number of pool participants that we could have at one time is sixty-six residents. So that would mean sixty-six physical bodies on the pool deck at one time. That's infants, children, parents, and then staff is not included in that. Okay, so that's actual sixty-six pool patrons. Okay, because I know there was some confusion. Is that sixty-six people on the pool deck, including staff? It's not. So that is sixty-six people on top of the pool staff. Okay, and that's Greg and I, head guards, lifeguards. We always have four, four lifeguards on duty. So that's on top of, which is good, because that means we can get more people on the pool deck. So this is what a typical day at the pool would look like. This is barring the restrictions. This is the temperature and screening, you know, any, any county building or city building that you go into, you have to have your temperature taken in. You know, the standard questionnaire, and this is for the sake of any contact tracing that would need to happen should any issues arise, whether that's staff on duty, contracting, contracting coronavirus, or anybody that had been in the facility. So that way, we would be able to get ahold of everybody to let them know, you know, that there are potential issues. Face coverings must be worn when not in the pool. This is a state of Michigan ordinance at this time. Again, I will make sure to ensure that I say at this time, that's as of today. I don't know moving forward what things will look like, but as of today, that's what the state ordinance is. We are still revisiting, being pre-registered for ninety to one hundred and twenty-minute time blocks, once per day per household. The pool area will be cleaned and reset between each time block. And everybody will have to have their pool tag for entry, and we will not have any concession stands or food consumption on the pool deck this year. That's for obvious reasons, because when you're not in the swimming pool, you will have to have your face mask on. So we will be allowing water bottles in, because obviously we want people to stay hydrated while you're on the pool deck. It's hot. So we will still make sure that people have access to water, and please bring your own refillable water bottle. We will be able to have those on the pool deck. So this is at the bottom. No, I believe top. It's the page of top. It's the top of page six. It's in the ridger. And this is how to sign up for a time slot. So if anybody comes to the wellness center, or if you've signed up for summer day camp, swim team, any of our free programs, any of the water aerobics, any programs, you should have one of these accounts on this activity registration dot com. And there will be, it's not up there right now, but there will be a button that says pool time slots, and you will go through and book yourself a pool time slot, just like you would book yourself for summer day camp, which lots of people have, swim team, which lots of people have, the wellness center, which tons of people do and have done since September very successfully. The, the, the hardest part for this will be user error. So if you can see down in the bottom right-hand corner, for a successful registration, every single person will get a a receipt, and this is what it will look like. If you did not get a If you did not get a receipt, you have not done your registration correctly. And this is where the problem is going to lie, because we still have a few people that use the gym on a regular basis. And they will think that they have gone through the registration process and they will have not either checked out, or they will have not clicked pay, or they will not have confirmed that they've gotten their receipt. And they'll show up for their assumed time that they think they're, they're supposed to be in the Wellness Center. Well, we already have five people in the Wellness Center at that time, so we unfortunately have to turn them away. And at that point, there's nothing we can do because they're not physically on our list. So we want to make sure that everybody will know how to use the software and have an account set up and established. So we will have practice days, like pool practice days on how to register. So we'll have dummy practice days, like how to register. So that way you can make sure that you and your family, you know, that the husband, the wife, the mom and the dad, all the kids, they all have their pool tags with their associated number. They have their account, you know, your email and password, how to get in. You'll know exactly what email the receipt goes to. You'll know if it goes to your junk mail or not. There have been some issues that people are getting their, if you have Gmail, really funnels it out a lot. They work, Gmail obviously is, is working really hard to make sure that you're not getting tons of spam. Excuse me. So they're making sure that you're not getting all this garbage all the time. So you're just making sure that you're checking your, your junk and your spam boxes too. So that way you know when you're done with your registration process, that you're confirmed for your time, because there's going to be nothing worse than arriving to the pool in your swimsuit on a hot day, just to not be on the list. And that's going to be terrible for you, and that's going to be terrible for me, and that's going to be terrible for the staff. So we want to make sure that all of those scenarios are eliminated by making sure that every single resident in household knows how to use the software, has a good working account. If they don't, we are happy to show you how to do it. We are going to practice it and make sure that everybody knows how to do it. So that way there's, there's no user error and, and room, in room for mistakes, okay? So that, because that's, that will be heartbreaking to me. If anybody knows me, there's, to send a little kid in a swimsuit away, because they're not on the list, would be devastating to somebody at the rec center. And you know, some of these kids will be 15 years old, working the front desk, and that would be devastating to them too. So we're going to try really hard to make sure everybody is well aware of how to do this. Reservations will be able to be made one week in advance. Again, we talked about this practice pool times, so watch the Facebook page, watch the city page. And we do send out e-blast. We do have about a 45% open rate. So if you want to, you know, we always put in the subject line, you know, pool or summer camp or whatever it is. Anytime that we're going to send that out, please make sure that you're opening those, because it has vital information. We don't send information out for e-blast, that's just not going to be not essential, okay? So we are, are very selective when we send those, so that way people are opening them on a regular basis. So that way it's not junk or clutter, okay? So please open those, because it will be vital information. We've already done some pool passes. So if you bring your picture ID to the Pleasant Ridge Community Center, make sure it has your picture on it with your Pleasant Ridge driver's license or your, your Pleasant Ridge address on there. And if you have your old key tags, they will still work. Please bring those, so we can confirm the number. And we can just get those renewed. Those little key tags, believe it or not, are kind of expensive. So please never throw those away. They will work from year to year to year to year to year. Now, if they're in bad shape, we are happy to replace those. But just in any given year, if they just are, they still look great, or you keep them in your pool bag, just keep them, because that does save the city some money. And then there is a replacement key tag fee of $10 per, per tag if you lose them, or if we have to end up replacing them. So please keep a good, good eye on those. If you lose them and we reissue a new one, the other ones can't be used. So it's not like somebody can find them off the street and come in and use them or anything like that, because they're just, they're not activated anymore. Once that number is overridden, that pass is no good, so. But make sure you bring your picture ID. We may or may not know you. Greg's still kind of new, he started in 2019. He may or may not know you. So make sure you please bring your picture ID, because you're not going to get a key tag without it, okay? And the rec center hours are there noted. If you have any questions about our hours, feel free to call the office and we'll make sure you know those hours. So here are our new chairs. We did make mention of the floors. I know it's kind of hard to see. But that is epoxy, so that is a very beautiful job that they've done, but it's also a non-slip surface. So those look really nice and they feel great. They're man of all and, and Perry have both been in to see them. And they look great and they're shiny right now, but they're not slippery. I know it, it looks shiny and slippery, but they're not. They have a really nice grip to them and they have really opened up the room. So that's gonna, it's really easy to clean for, for many years to come. The lifeguards will be able to keep a much better handle on cleaning them. Those mats before were easy, were very difficult to clean underneath. So we think this is a much better option moving forward to keep the locker rooms clean and, and safe and sanitary too. So you can kind of see up here the blue, the blue chairs, which are beautiful, the lounge chairs. And then in the top left, those are the squatter chairs by the shallow end. Those are really nice. I said it in today, they're beautiful, they kick out. If you know, I see the, it's like a lazy boy recliner there. The foot kicks out. It's really nice. And then the orange accents went really nice with the blue sling chairs, we thought, so. So these are some TBD things. I know this is probably what's on everybody's mind. We are still waiting for the state and county to make some COVID guidelines, capacities and rulings. We will expect those in mid-May-ish, hopefully sooner. The length of the swimming blocks, 90, 20, or 120 minutes. So we did do some averaging out last year, or I'm sorry, not last year, the last swim season, 2019, the average. So we did pull the week-end average was 186 pool patrons, but that included guests a day. So if we did 320-minute time blocks, that would allow for 198 pool patrons a day. So we're trying to get the balance to make sure that anybody that wants to use the pool per day, that we're meeting that average. And then we will use a 30-minute in-between the, each blocks for cleaning, resetting. I use the word herding in there. That's just kind of moving people in and out. So that way the passing from one time block to the next is minimal. So that way there's not too much interaction between time blocks. And then water testing, I'm not sure if anybody knows this, but we do do three water samples a day. And that is to maintain our county licenses. Because we are, we do have a state and county pool license. And to maintain those every day, when they come in and check those, we do have to have three water samples a day. So we will use that time for the head guard to do some of those, some of those things. Guest passes will be determined by the city commission at the May 11th meeting. And then we have had a few people ask about morning lab swim and swim lessons. That will be determined in mid-May, and we are still waiting about staffing level and state and county guidelines. So we will hopefully know more about that by the May 11th meeting. But we do have some good, uh, good things to report on the staffing front. We did have 32 applicants for lifeguards, so we thought that was great. I know, that was awesome. So the, yeah, so that we had, gosh, probably 10 people in the last like day and a half applied. So that was really great. We love to hear that. We have made the initial contact with the lifeguards to set up interviews via Zoom. So we are pushing right along with that. So hopefully we can meet our 25 minimum.
So I know they're really competitive and hard to find lifeguards, because everybody trying to get, make this happen. Will you talk about, will you talk about some of the things that you did to find these people and to try to get them to go with us?
Yeah, so normally lifeguards kind of just fall into our lap, and that's been the case for the last 20 years they've been in Parks and Recreation. It's been pretty easy to find, you work with your local swim teams. And there's, you know, 10, 15 kids right there, and then you have kids that like to swim, and then there's kids whose parents like to swim. And then you have, boom, right there, your 25 lifeguards. Well, that's not the case these days anymore. So we did reach out to seven schools, all of our four local school districts, Oak Park, Ferndale, Hazel Park, Berkeley. And then we reached out to all of our publics, or all the private schools, Mercy, Marion, U of D. The list is so long, I forget. And then we worked with U of D Boys Swim Team, that his name is Drew Edson. We worked with Kevin Fogarty. He hooked us up with some contacts at the Royal Oak Y. So we did, um, we did do some digging here, some soul searching to find some people. And then we also are going to reimburse the staff for the cost of the, the lifeguarding course, which is about $204, just depending where you take it. It's like plus or minus $5, like Waterford charges 235. Farmington's 240, so it's, it's roughly, you know, give or take five or 10 bucks here or there, just depending where you take it. But no other cities, counties, or, you know, private pools do that, so that's really a leg up on other commu-, on other communities and other pool facilities that do that. So that's really nice that we're doing that, and that will be reimbursed on their first paycheck. So we feel really lucky and we have a lot, and we have a lot of local kids too. Lot of local Pleasant Ridge residents too that are, have applied, so we're excited.
Excellent, excellent. Quest, questions for Shawnee?
I'm going to get out a screen share real quick, so that way I can see other people.
Okay. Shawnee, are you, before we open, I just have one more question. Are we gonna, so we're going to be doing like promoting, promoting people, signing up and getting their tags all the time before this, before the pool opens, right?
Absolutely. So we've already done families, if they've come in, like there was somebody that came in yesterday, they renewed their dog license, they had their picture ID. We just did their tags, because there was nobody else in line. She had three minutes to spare out of her day. So we just went ahead and did them. So anytime somebody can get a chance to come on in and stop in, because we're not going to do them during pool time, because I, we, we feel, we don't want to hold up the rest of anybody's, either 90 minutes or 120 minutes of pool time for somebody's key fobs. Because you got all month of April, you got all month of May to come in and get your pe-, get your key fobs done or your pool tags. So, so we don't have to do that during the pool time. Come on in. Plenty of open hours for somebody to come on and do that, yeah.
And then also, this is all subject, I mean, things are changing. This is all subject to change based on, this is what we know right this minute.
Today, yes. As of April 13th, and these things could change, get better. The 50% could go to 75, go to 60, yeah, it could go to 25. I, I don't know. You know, I, I wish I could predict the future. I can't. I know what we can do as recreation professionals, city employees. We are doing all the right steps and the necessary steps to have the pool open and ready to go for when the county pulls the trigger and says, you can open.
Okay, thank you.
Water clarity is good, the, you know, we have acid and chlorine going into the pool. The ducks are enjoying it greatly right now.
We got some ducks?
Yeah, we got the ducks already. So everything on our end will be handled, the staffing issues. I was at City Hall today, working with Amy. She will have, you know, we talked about the hiring process. She'll have all the Zoom stuff ready to go. So anything that we can have together, coordinated, pulled together, we will have. Shirt companies, uh, uniform sizes for sta-, you know, all of that stuff that we can have. We've already ordered electric whistles, because staff will have to sit with a mask on. So we've ordered electric whistles. It blows like a stopwatch. So we already have those ordered. We have a new backboard, the shepherd's hook, if anybody knows what that is. Pool deck, and, you know, so we're, we're ready to go. We're just waiting for the higher up people to give us the guidance on where to go with that opening.
Great job on really being able to cultivate that many recruits for the lifeguards. I know that's been a big challenge. Good job.
Thank you. So we actually had more than Oakland County. They had 27, we had 32, so, and they have two big water park.
I think paying for the, I think paying for the certification is a huge thing.
It's huge. Jim figured it out. It's about a 75 cent an hour raise, so.
Right. Question, will they be able to twirl their electronic whistles?
They are about, Greg, what is it, $25 apiece?
Too expensive to be twirling around.
So you're going to let them twirl an old whistle? I mean, they got to do something, right?
Oh yeah, we got bags of those.
Okay, just, just one thing, oh, I was going to point out one, one piece of health-related information. Just as we're, as the residents are listening in on this and trying to decide whether we're going to, you know, have any restrictions in terms of opening. I was just looking at the Oakland County COVID dashboard. Pleasant Ridge has had 125 COVID cases since the beginning. But we've had 31 of those cases in the last 30 days. So a quarter of all COVID cases in Pleasant Ridge since last year, since March of last year, have come in the last 30 days. So we are not out of the woods yet, and I encourage, if you can get a vaccine, get out there and get it. But we obviously, COVID is still rife in, in Pleasant Ridge. And I don't think, you know, unless we can start seeing those numbers go down countywide and certainly here, we're going to have to be living with, with severe restrictions, so.
You, you will certainly not swim this year if you don't get your pool tag. So even before you hear about what we're doing, get yourself into the rec center, schedule some time and get your pool tag ordered. So that whatever happens, you're at least prepared at home, and everyone at your house has a pool tank. And spread the word with your neighbors, your friends, your pets, whatever. Just let everybody know.
And that account too, the, the setting up the account is huge, because we still have gym people now. Again, the gym people come every day, so you know, when you have to send them away or whatever, they're grownups, they're adults. They're like, oh shoot, you know, whatever, we'll see you tomorrow. It's not that big of a deal. But to send home a kid in a bathing suit on a 90-degree day, it's, that will be heart-wrenching. So we're trying to avoid that at all costs. So we will do these practices, we'll see where these emails go. We'll make sure that everybody knows how to do that, because that will be the worst of the worst-case scenario. Because the worst.
Because.
Yeah, yeah. You, you can't put Shawnee in that situation, right? Everybody knows this. No, can't do it. Can't do it, so, so we're gonna, we're going to make sure those, that practice happens. And everybody's well aware, yeah. So we, since, since I'm just on a roll here, I will talk about, we did have Registration Day yesterday. I'm not sure if anybody knows what that is, but we did do all of our swim team registration and Summer Day Camp. Most of Summer Day Camp was sold out by 8:18 yesterday morning. So we only have a few spots left in Week 3, which is the very short week. It's the two-day, Week 3, it's the two days, the week of the 4th of July. So that, that's great. Everything's full there with wait lists. And I believe we're at like 62 swimmers. We did have a, a limit to swimmers this year. We have 100 spots. Last, in 2019, we had 177 swimmers. This year, we're going to have 100 swimmers, and I believe it's at, Greg, quote me if I'm wrong, 62 swimmers, 65, somewhere right around there.
Yeah, roughly that.
It, it's plus or minus that, but it's over 60 for sure.
Good, good.
So we had a really good day yesterday.
I know some of our residents were. I know some of our residents were, were scared they weren't gonna get in. So they, they were gonna start calling at seven thirty and just to see how.
I know, yeah, people beat me to my office.
I'm sure they did.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Sure.
I felt like it was concert tickets.
Yeah, so it was a good day.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay.
I have a couple of questions. I don't know, are residents allowed to speak? Wanted to make sure.
We will take, we will take a question.
Okay, so I have a few.
Can you give your name and address please?
Sure, Natalie Fuoco, twenty-one Millington. Um, are lifeguards required to stay a certain length of time for that reimbursement?
So they will get it on their first paycheck.
And then are they required to stay for the summer or?
We hope they will.
Okay. Um, and you talked about the weekend rate. Do we know what the weekday rate is? Cause I'm wondering if passes are necessary for weekdays? Or if that, if we could just have maybe like the registration system for weekends instead? I know a lot of us, like, parents.
It was, yeah, it wasn't too far off. Um, I don't have that. Let me look, I could get that information, but for the end of the meeting, cause I'll have to just dig back through a past email. But it wasn't too far off. It was, it was, we did the average and the median for May, June, July and August, like overall for the month, and then we just pulled out the weekend days too, for just the weekends. So but it wa- it was not too terribly far off. It was within, within a matter of a few nu- ten people or something, Jim?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, I I would add that this is a learning um and to some level, a a guessing process for staff as we try to figure out, you know, what, how this is all gonna work. So um, I know we we have some, you know, some of the private clubs did some similar things last year and we can learn from that. But um, our, kind of our concept is is we're gonna, we're gonna start out maybe a little more restrictive and see how it goes. And then if we see from the data for, you know, how many people are signing up for weekday slots, we can easily change that and adjust that as we go. But we'd rather start out kind of a little more cautiously, uh, rather than starting out too loose and having issues arise and then having to get stricter as the season goes on. Um, so, you know, weekdays, yeah, it could be less crowded. It could be something we learn from. Uh, but I, you know, we don't know exactly how that works or what they look like yet.
That and the uh, the average for the day of, what was it, one ninety-eight? It is less important than the number per time slot. So the big reason we have time slots is because we don't want more than sixty-six people showing up at a certain time. So if we have a really hot day on a Tuesday in July and eighty people wanna show up and we don't have a system in place, well, then it becomes chaos. So this is sort of to manage those, that maximum number on the pool deck.
And I know that those numbers included guests. Um, so residents didn't have access to the pool last summer. Um, and we're not certain how much access we're gonna have this summer. Is there conversation about maybe not extending guest passes this year to ensure?
That was, that was on the list. Yeah, yeah.
That that will be decided at the May eleventh meeting.
Right even.
And what are you guys like using to consider that? Like what?
We're voting.
Okay.
Yep, city commission will vote on that.
Okay. And are you like, resident feedback for that? Are you reaching out to the community?
Natalie, I will guarantee if if there are only sixty-six people allowed at one time, I'm not going to be authorizing guest passes. So if our numbers are kept that low, it's very hard just to consider having guests as part of that sixty-six.
Okay. And last question, um, the face mask requirement, I obviously understand it to go through the city building, but the discussion of face masks outside, um, what mandate is requiring face masks outside when you're social distancing or within your own, cause we're already gonna be grouped with families, like, you know, family of four in their chairs away from everyone else. Um, what mandate states that you have to be required to wear a face mask outside while socially distanced?
The March nineteenth uh, Health Department ordinance, section eight.
We can send you that link too, if you need us to.
Be great.
What does that number say for the Health Department? For outdoor gatherings?
You need the phone number?
No, no, I'm asking Greg, I'm asking Greg for that statement. He said that.
Those are, it lists all the exceptions to uh, the face masking requirements. Um, the only one that would apply to us is the swimming. So or exercising outdoors, which if you're laying by the pool or not actively swimming, wouldn't count as exercising.
So what is that? I know, I'm confused. Does that mean you don't have to wear a mask if you're just sitting in a chair?
That means you have to wear a mask unless you are exercising and you're able to maintain six feet of distance or you're swimming in the pool.
The one with you. Six feet of distance.
You're okay there as well.
Exercising is the key.
Six.
So if you're running outside, you don't need to wear a mask as long as you're able to maintain six feet of distance.
I guess, I guess we would have to see the governor's ruling.
It's it's on the, it's if you go to, if you go to Michigan dot gov slash coronavirus.
Yep.
It is the top order.
Okay. Well, since we're talking, um, Natalie, not to, are you, are you done with your questions, Natalie? Okay, so since we're talking, I know you guys have probably heard enough from me, you know, Christine, Tim, uh, one oh six Elm Park. I uh, I I guess I'm I'm struggling to understand why we'd be waiting until the May's meeting to vote on the guest policy. I know we've talked about this.
Sorry, we still talk, we still don't know about um occupancy. Numbers.
So your your reason to delay considering guests would be that we could potentially open at a hundred per consent capacity?
We're gonna determine guests based on on capacity, this decisions, yeah. I mean, you want me to say no guests right today? I mean, what are you, what are you looking for? What do you want us to be able to tell you today?
Well, I don't want it to be contentious. I I think I've been pretty vocal about how we feel. I think our children residents of this neighborhood went a whole summer without a pool. And I think we would like community outreach from all of you on how the neighbors and residents of the community feel and what our plans are on attending the pool. Cause I can tell you right now, I think probably what, twenty, thirty percent of the residents of this neighborhood actually use the pool. So it's concerning to me that we're waiting another month to vote on guests. And that we're not looking for, we're, I'm not getting, seeing any surveys or outreach to the community on this. I also know that tonight in twenty nineteen, on average, spent five to six evenings at the pool. And during the week, Monday through Thursday, on average, we would see about sev- seven, maybe eight families at the pool on a weeknight. Yeah. So I I just am wondering why during the week or on a weeknight, we would need to make a reservation for ninety minutes. I think.
Well, because we don't know how many people are going to sign up. So you may say that may be the case and that may be very true most nights. But there could be a night, like I said, what if it's ninety degrees and there's a lot of people who decide they wanna go? And we, we're not expecting it, but let's say eighty people show up. Well, that puts us in a bit, a bit of a situation. And it's really not that hard to sign up. You can check right before you come if there's open spots, is it, is it as empty as you seem to think it will be? But it's, it's really, it's, it's, it's not that big of a deal. Ask anybody who goes to the gym on a regular basis. It's really not that difficult process.
I don't mean to speak over you, but I'm not questioning by any means the difficulty of of using a website to sign up for a time slot. I work full time. I, I do remember what it was like though, to have babies home. And I have a lot of stay-at-home mom friends and considering how their babies nap and what their summer days are like, for them to plan what time their child's gonna wake up from a nap and they're gonna take them to the pool is not about them going online and signing up. It's about the flexibility of their afternoon and their day. We pay a lot of money to live in this community and I think you guys are making assumptions without reaching out and speaking to the residents of this neighborhood. And that's what's upsetting to me. On a Monday night, if I get done with work early and I wanna take my kids to the swimming pool two blocks away from my house, I should be able to do that and I shouldn't be having to make a exception to my schedule.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I may just for a second, Mayor.
Can I chime in here, Mayor Metcalf? Um, I'm not sure.
Um, so we will know the maximum number of people that can go to the pool because it is limited by the number of people that request tags and go online and fill out the paperwork. So we're gonna have a really good idea for the number of people that will use the pool this season based on your, you know, your application to get into the pool. This year, we are required to have tags, required to know the number of people that are involved. So the best advice that I could give is if you know people that want to swim this year, get them signed up, get them online, get them registered so that we have a really good count of the number of people that are interested in using the pool this year. And then with that information, we can make a decision. It could, we could call a special meeting and do it earlier than May, the next May meeting. But uh, we won't know that until we have information from the state and we won't know that until we have enough residents that have signed up through the process. So not discounting what you're just saying, we're early in the process of getting things set up. Our intention is to keep everybody informed of what's going on. That's why Shawnee has given all of the information she's given tonight. And uh, you're gonna hear more and more and more over the next few weeks about how the pool's going to work uh, based on all of this information that we collect.
Okay, I think it's, I think it's fair to assume though, we have residents moving into the neighborhood, right? That may be delayed in signing up for a pool pass. We may have people moving into the community in June and July that are then going to be signing up for a pool pass. I think I've been pretty vocal in the past about the percentage of guests to residents at the pool and how concerning that is. And I I I'm very displeased that we're waiting to vote on that for a month. I think that that should actually be, uh, and I thought that that would be on the agenda tonight. Um, so I I I also too want to mention, I saw in the ridger that the outdoor pavilion would be available for rent. Um, I was under the impression, and maybe I'm mistaken, but I was under the impression the foundation paid for the pavilion to be used by the pool patrons. So I had envisioned that as really a gift to the community so that when we're at the pool, we can use that for shade or my children can use that as a gathering space. When I saw the word rent, I thought, well, I hope we're not renting to outside residents coming into the pool to use that pavilion. I hope that's not the case, correct?
No, that would be for people to be able to rent that space during their time block.
Okay, so how tied are?
Ninety or a hundred minute time block. It would be for the resident to rent for their their private space during their time block.
Okay, okay. All right.
Christine, if I may ask, do you have your questions listed?
I do.
Only because it'd be great to receive the questions that you have so that we can respond to all of them as thoroughly as possible. Um, and and we're happy to do that. At least I'm happy to do that.
But I didn't hear back from you, Brett, um, or Ann. I did email them too after the last meeting. Um, and I can.
I'm sorry, Christine, you did hear back from me. I'm sorry, right?
No, I I I got an acknowledgement, but I.
No, I sent you responses.
Questions were not answered. No.
Well.
I'm not, you guys, I'm not trying to be contentious. I live in this neighborhood because I love this community, but I remember.
The community too, and there really are a lot of rules.
Ann, what, how we ended last year's meeting was that we wanted to try to make this year special for the community residents and the children of this community. And to me, nine time blocks, especially again, I work full time, but for the stay-at-home moms, I know that that's not realistic. So I'm just, I'm, I'm disappointed this is where we're at and I'm disappointed you guys aren't voting on the guest policy tonight.
Well, yeah. I was just gonna say, if you're gonna err on the side of caution and do time blocks and all of those things, I think you rule out guest passes and then you open those up moving forward if everything looks okay. That would be erring on the side of caution. If you're gonna do ninety-minute time blocks, no guests until we see.
That's.
There's a lot of people that have their hands raised.
Yeah, let's move on to.
So, right, um, so we have uh, Tom McAvoy has his hand raised. And then after that, we have Jessica Herzog. So, Tom, go for it. Tom, we can't hear you.
You're muted.
You're muted. Maybe we should grab Jessica.
How about we go to Jessica while Tom gets his uh, text sorted out?
Sorry, I got a broken mic. Um, can you hear me now?
Okay, never mind, sorry, Jessica.
Yeah. Um, thank you, thanks, James. And thanks, Jessica, I'll just be a second. I just wanted to dovetail with uh, a question that Val put in the, Val Weiss, oh, by the way, seventy-seven Oakdale, Tom McAvoy. Um, Jet, um, Val put a question about vaccinations. I'm about to get my second dose tomorrow and would that in be affecting any of the masking or any of those mandates and and um, any testing for staff or personnel on the, on the pool property? And um, I'm on the website right now, Shawnee. I don't see it live. When does that go live?
When do, I'm sorry, when does what go live?
The signup site.
Oh, not till we know what we're gonna do, when we know what the time blocks are.
Okay, so we don't have the time blocks established yet?
We don't, no.
So so the signup would be a week in advance. So once we're, you know, when we open on the twenty-eighth of May, the twenty-first of May would be the first day you could sign up for that twen- that opening day and then it rolls a week in advance.
How many, how many slots could you sign up for in a week?
One a day.
One per day, okay.
One per day, a week in advance. Yep.
Okay.
And there will be a button. I'm not sure, did you do any signups for camp or anything? Have you looked at the software?
I have and I, yeah, we did camps and swim teams. The site's great. And I think Christine, you were talking about using, you know, the, our, our fast-paced lives. I did it on my phone. So I think it's gonna be very easy. Once we get everybody acclimated to that, to just pop bookmark that tab, pop in there, it, you know, it saves your passwords now and everything. And and if if there is a slot, or what do we do if someone doesn't show up for their slot on time? Do we hold it for them or do we open it to other residents that may wanna take that slot?
So that are, that's some policies that Greg and I have been talking about. So there is a way for people to take themselves out of time blocks.
Okay.
So with the gym and the wellness center, we have not had too much issue. I mean, it's been so minimal that it's not been an issue. Again, that's only five people an hour. So we're hopeful with the same thing with the pool that it will not become an issue. But um, kind of like the three-strike-your-out rule is what it's been at the wellness center. We've only had it invoked at one time. Um, if you've not taken yourself out and you've not shown up three times, then we can inactivate that your ability to sign yourself up for a time slot. Then you have to call to make your reservations.
Okay, and always remember you can call if you wanna, if you're not buyers of cell phone or computer for whatever reason, you can always call and say, hey, there's anything available. We can check immediately.
Yeah, and we can manually put you in just as easy.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead, Jessica.
Oh, hi, everybody. I'm Jessica Herzog. I live at One Sullivan. Um, I guess I have a question about just that sixty-six number where that actually came from. Because I, if I'm not mistaken, um, was the original maximum capacity for our pool a little over two hundred people? So if we do fifty percent of that, um, wouldn't that be more closer to a hundred people at the pool at any given one time? I just wanted kind of clarification on where that sixty-six number originally came from.
Yep. So there's an equation. It is the length of your pool times the width of your pool times the depth of your pool. So it's the square footage of your pool divided by I wish, Greg, do you have that equation with you?
I don't have it right in front of me. I can't.
I'm sorry, I'm taking the meeting from my house.
And we're, and the number we're using is the non, uh, the the non-zero depth area. So.
Right.
Everything else.
Cause that is considered non-swimmable area, nonusable area because that is at this time. Um, trying to keep everything positive, but the zero depth area is considered water park features. And at this time, water parks are still closed. Like if you were to go up north, you know, to Great Wolf Lodge or something, you wouldn't be able to swim in their pool cause water parks are closed. Oakland County's going through the same thing. They don't know if they're gonna be able to open cause water parks are closed at this time. They're not sure if they're, the county's gonna be able to let them open or not. So we can only consider the surface area of like the, the swim. Let them open or not. So we can only consider the surface area of like the, the swimming lanes.
Okay, and, um, just a couple more things. Um. One, I mean, I hear that you're saying, you know, that water parks aren't open, but I think. I do think it's important for us to keep an eye on what is actually happening. Because I do think that there's a lot of misinformation out there. Also, it's confusing to know like. The state guidelines sometimes don't match up with the county guidelines. And so I'm just kind of curious to know like. How y'all make a decision on what guidelines to follow when sometimes they're contradictory. And, you know, a lot of us have been doing a lot of research and paying close attention to it too. Not saying that y'all aren't. I'm just saying. It, it, we would just like to see a little more clarification on. What y'all are following and why and what it's based on because sometimes. Like you said, it changes. Sometimes, I mean, like Great Wolf Lodge is currently open. There, I know people that went there like a week ago.
But so.
And those things are open.
Well, their pool's not. I was told differently, but I wasn't there physically. So who knows? But. So anyways, I'm just. Maybe in Traverse City. I'm sorry, may, I should say maybe in Traverse City because their numbers might be different. They may be operating, they're in a different county. So I don't know. So we are, we, our body of water is governed by an Oakland County water. Or a pool license, and we also are governed by the state. So we have a state license and a, in Oakland County license. So we are governed by both. So we will need to meet the criteria for both the state and the county to stay, remain open.
So if the state mandates are less restrict, do you follow the state or do you follow the county?
We will follow the most restrictive guidelines. We will always side, side on the air of caution.
Okay, and then one final just statement. It's not really maybe a question, but just something to consider. I just, I think some residents have a concern that. You know, I understand things are changing. I understand that y'all are, you know, trying to keep things positive and the outlook is, you know. Hopeful, um, but it's sometimes it's a hard pill to swallow to know that. We don't have, you know, more concrete things in place, as least as the baseline because. When we see communication going out about paid functions, like the swim team, like summer camp. Um, you know, we noticed that a couple of events that are gonna happen at the pool, like the luau. Excuse me, the luau, the Olympic thing. Um, those are all paid things that seem to be very. Concrete and confirmed. Like you can sign up for that now. And it's frustrating to know that like, those things seem okay. To move forward in, in capacity and everything is planned out perfectly for those, but not. The resident regular season. I think that's where some of us are just kind of frustrated and we're hung up on it a little bit. And we just, we would just hope that there would be a parallel path on that. We don't want it to be contradictory. It just, it's frustrating to think that, yeah, we pay taxes and that's, that's a separate thing. But then. We can use the pool right now for other things if we pay for it. So I think that's kind of the consensus that some of us are feeling and we're just a little frustrated and. And wanting some more transparency on that. So if that helps at all.
Yeah, well, I appreciate those comments, but if you look at those maximums, like if you look at the father's. Daughter, um, luau, there's sixty people maximum. So we won't hit the sixty-six people maximum per. You know, the fifty percent capacity, right? So, because I'm not gonna sell a, a hundred person luau on the pool deck when I can only have sixty-six people per time slot. You know what I'm saying? Um, the mother-son is forty people. Camp was capped at fifty. If you notice, the swim team was capped at a hundred, but there's twenty per age group. So that's like twenty. Per different, um. You know, each age group has a different time slot that they'll practice in. So that's twenty kids in the pool at one time, not one hundred. So there are very limits. So like for the swim team, parents won't even be allowed on the pool deck. During swim team practice. All of our meets will be held virtually in the morning. We won't have any evening swim meets. We, um.
The rec center is open and not paid, so under reduced capacity as example.
But, right, exactly. The wellness center, five people at a time. So everything is open, paid things are, but they're all at their max. They are. Well-established within the means of the capacity and under, you know. So we, we've done, we've been very cautious to meet and exceed. You know, we have how many. Coaches can be on deck with one time with how many kids, different things like that. So while I know it seems like a hundred kids on the swim team seem a lot, all hundred kids aren't gonna be on the swim team. And on the pool deck at one time.
Which, which I understand. I guess I just, I just think residents this year. Maybe not all, maybe I'm just speaking for me, but I think, um, there's some of us that feel like. We just want the opportunity for residents to kind of get like. First priority, first dibs before we start opening the pool up in any capacity for paid endeavors. I mean, I know summer camp might be a little bit different, but like swim team, you're talking about bringing in non-residents potentially for that. So when you're, you tell residents that. We mayor, we don't know what it's gonna look like for the regular season at this time, to be able to open up our pool. To potential non-residents for even something like swim team. Kind of seems a little bit like a slap in the face to the residents who really want access as much as possible. And so that's, that's, I just want to reiterate that that might be where some of us are coming from.
I'm done. Yeah, thank, thank you. Again, we've, we've tried to really manage and, and maintain the, the maximum and minimums. I mean, we're used to a hundred and seventy-seven kids on the swim team. So to go down to a hundred is, is difficult. In its own and to see kids on a waitlist for summer camp, eh, heartbreaking for me, you know? I mean, but those are just the realities. Of, of the time sadly, and hopefully as the weather gets nicer, more people get vaccinated. More things will open up and that's just what.
The thing, the thing to remember is if we're legally allowed to open this pool this year. We will open this pool and residents will be the number one priority. Swim team starts a little bit before open swim does. That's just how it has to work with the schedule. There's really no way, other way around it, but just remember the pool will open this year as long as we are legally allowed to do so.
Thank you, Greg.
And we're thankful most of the swim team is, uh, residents at this point, so.
Good.
Sixty-five percent.
I really right now.
Yeah.
Just quick, quick question about swim team. Um, the requirements for swimming, since our kids weren't. Last year to know if they can swim that. Can we like sign them up and if they can't be reimbursed and have a spot open for someone else? Okay. Thank you. I've been meaning to email you.
That's a great question.
Okay, are there other questions?
Not anymore.
Good.
Wait, I, I have a question again. So what, what are we gonna expect next month? What will next month's commission meeting look like? What can we count on?
We're gonna work, we'll, we'll work on it, Christine. We'll let you know.
Okay, um.
Well, I don't, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have an agenda. I don't have an agenda today for you.
Okay, okay, I just want to be clear, um, to Tom's point. It's not the. I, I'm very computer literate. I'm, I'm not challenged by signing up for time blocks. That, that was not, I just want to be clear with everyone. That's not a concern for me. At all. What was a concern is that on weeknights and weekdays that I would have to sign up a week in advance to take to the pool.
That's not how it works. The earliest you can sign up is a week in advance. You can sign up and like right now with a gym, you can sign up all, all the way up until ten minutes before that time slot starts. So that's just the earliest you can possibly sign up.
Well, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, and you can sign up anytime between that week before and the day and that time slot.
Yep.
Right.
It can be a rolling week or will that reset on a certain date?
No, it's a rolling week. Every day adds another day.
Yep. Date to date.
And, and we're gonna, as Shawnee said, we're gonna have some practice runs with all of this, so. Everyone give it a try and then we'll have a good feel for how this is going to work.
Well, and I think that to your point, I think we have to start somewhere and we can make changes as things go along, like. To Christine's point about people, you know, not a lot of people coming at night. I mean, we're gonna roll with this. We're gonna try to make, you know, make this the best to maximize for all the residents. The residents are the priority. Clearly.
Any, any special considerations for vaccinations? Or is that?
Nope.
Sorry, Tom.
We'll be vaccinated with you, Tom.
Don't you guys don't think it's interesting though that. You can exercise s- s- uh, six feet apart or whatever without a mask, but you can't sit six feet apart without a mask? Is that? That doesn't make everyone feel weird.
But.
It doesn't, but I, I understand you didn't write that. They didn't write the law. So. It's just a general. I, I get, yeah, I guess my question, okay, so a follow-up question with that, Tim, is if we, can we, you know. Consider or apply for consideration from the state, being that we, we're not a very dense community. And the pool deck is not a very dense, for the most part.
Right.
No, I'm asking, can, we can't apply for consideration?
It doesn't, it doesn't work that way.
It doesn't work like that.
Okay. Mister, Mister Mayor, it also suggests that this is governmental reports and crosstalk between residents is really.
Right, I think we're, I think we're done here, so.
Yeah, we're done.
Okay.
Hey, guys, we don't want to be contentious. I just want to keep verifying that. We just, we want, uh, we want to make it as best as. Possible for the residents of the community, the children of this community this summer. Um, I, I just, I want to be clear about that. I'm not trying to cause any problems. We just want to be realistic. I think. Shawnee's gonna, I don't envy Shawnee. I've seen it and I've made this very clear to all of you commissioners. I've seen residents come up to the front desk at the pool and lose their temper left and right with the desk staff. So I think. Being prepared for people being registered in advance, like those are things that we have to be realistic about.
Can I, as a, as a new member, it's a Pleasant Ridge. Can I, I want to make two points. One, I don't think it's fair or professional for the mayor of the city to say, oh, for God's sakes. In response to a resident speaking their mind. Second. To come in, there's a lot bigger problems going on in this world than our pool. I just want to say that. And I hope as a new member. Who was hesitant to move to this community because of the level of privilege, I want people to pay attention. To the bigger issues at hand. I'm just saying, pool privileges are important. But they're not that important. And, and as a mayor, to speak down to residents in that tone. Not cool, not cool in my book. Oh, for God's sake is not. A professional way to respond to a member who's speaking their mind. Just saying. Welcome to Pleasant Ridge.
Thanks, thank you.
Valerie, for, for the meeting minutes, what address are you at?
Sorry, One Kenberton.
Thanks.
Okay. Next item on the agenda are city. Commission liaison reports. We'll start with Commissioner Budnick with Ferndale Public Schools.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Uh, Mister Mayor, I'm gonna start off with the library. Record if that's okay with you. And. Mary and Stacy graciously provided me with that. So. Spring is finally here and Huntington Woods Library is ready for it. There are two events that are currently planned to take place at this point, in person, not on Zoom, yes. In person with a smiley face is what they wrote. First, Earth Day Recycled Crafts will take place in the children's room at the library on Thursday, April twenty-second from four to five P M. Second, an all-ages library garden pet parade will take place at the library. Um, on the eleventh from four to five. Spaces are limited, so sign up as soon as possible. Uh, this month, you'll, this month you'll also get a chance to explore backyard wildlife flora. And fauna with Andrew Nowicki, an environmental educator who previously worked at the Howell Nature Center. This event will take place via Zoom on Wednesday, April twenty-first from seven to eight thirty. And finally, another very popular series continues this month with Zoom Cooking. Featuring Huntington Woods Cookbook Author Jane Elkon. This month she'll be cooking mom's spaghetti sauce on Wednesday, April fourteenth from seven to eight thirty. The library also continues its age-level programming storytimes and book groups. To sign up for the April events, go to the Huntington Woods Library webpage, which is HuntingtonWoodsL I B dot org. Or give them a buzz at two four eight five four three ninety-seven twenty. And second, the Ferndale School Board, this meeting took place, uh, and at the end of March. Uh, so a little dated, but prom as of, as of that meeting, prom is on for both U H S and F H S, which is exciting. The student representatives were very happy to be back in person. They said they felt safe and their teachers did a great job accommodating, making everyone feel good about everything. Graduation is set for six-two and a little breakdown, uh, the hybrid. Thirty-nine percent of students are going through a hybrid model right now. And sixty-one percent are doing purely virtual learning. So just a couple of things on the school board there, and that wraps it up for me, Mayor.
Thank you so much. You're welcome. Are there any questions, comments? Okay, moving right along, Commissioner Perry, planning D D A.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission and D D A have not met, um, since our last meeting, but they are scheduled to meet on Monday, April twenty-sixth. So you can, um, you can join them via Zoom and we will make sure, and the meeting will be posted on the city website. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Commissioner Scott with Historical Commission.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, the Historical Commission is preparing for what will be our. Uh, our sanctuary show and September eleventh. Essentially, what would normally have been a home and garden show will be. Uh, featuring the gardens of neighbors in Pleasant Ridge. Uh, several people have already signed up their yards, uh, for. Uh, the, the tour on September eleventh. We're still looking for other people to sign up, so feel free to reach out to me or City Hall. If you're interested in, uh, having your backyard or other sanct- uh, garden sanctuary featured on September eleventh. Um, the museum is also available, uh, if people would like to go in, people that have recently moved into the neighborhood and just. See the file that might be available on your home, uh, because, uh, over the years, information has been saved for each address in Pleasant Ridge. And you might find some interesting details out about the home that you live in, uh, by visiting the, uh, by visiting our museum. And the garden next to the museum is starting to bloom and the historical commission and other members of the garden club have been working on that. And it's absolutely beautiful to see things. Uh, pop up out of the ground. It's starting to look like spring around town and, and that area is as well. So. If you have a moment, uh, you're just looking for a way to spend lunchtime, hop over to one of our parks. Or go see the garden next to the museum and the historical commission would be happy to, to host someone if they'd like to, to see it or have a little tour of what's there. And that's all I have for today, Mayor.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, next is Commissioner Wall with the Recreation Commission.
Hi, everyone. Let's talk, let's talk about some fun things happening. Uh, Pleasant Ridge Safety Day, Saturday, June twenty-sixth from nine to eleven. At the community center, parking lot, uh, seventy, listen to the. Seventy multi-sport helmets will be given to the first seventy children. I think that's cool. Pre-register for safety day. Uh, Mother's Day, mother-daughter, daughter-henna. This is cool. I signed up for this. Mother-daughter matching henna. Um, Friday, May seventh, spots from four thirty to eight thirty at the community center. It's seventeen dollars for mother and daughter couple. Uh, pre-register for a slot. Base coverings are required. Um, a protective barrier will be used. Henna is by Monique Herzig, owner of Alchemy Slow Living Studio. Uh, Gainesboro Gallery Community Art Show. This is a first. This is gonna be really fun. Friday, June twenty-fifth, rain date, um. Rain date, June twenty-sixth, five thirty to eight thirty, looking for, um, artists of all ages. Um, in varieties, photography, painting, sculpting, drawing, and mixed media categories. So that will be good. We have some, um. We have some local artists in the neighborhood. They're gonna be judging the competition. Um, P R tennis lessons. We teach fundamentals that apply to all sports. Our goal is to make tennis more accessible. And more fun to people, especially kids. Spring classes, Thursdays, May sixth through June tenth. Um, five fifteen to six thirty, Pee-wee tennis, four to six. Um, six thirty to seven thirty, seven to twelve-year-olds. Seven thirty to eight thirty, thirteen-year-olds, so adults. Adults, um, are welcome with the thirteen-year-olds. Um. Uh, L I T Leaders in Training Program for seventh graders and older, register by May tenth. Cost is twenty-five dollars a child. Um, it's a six-hour-a-week commitment. Shawnee, is there anything you want to say about that? About the L I T program? No?
Yeah, no, no, I do. I was trying to get my mouse to get to the, um, unmute button. Sorry about that. Yeah, so that's a really great program. Um, so we do. Um, like, uh, the kids do get a T-shirt. It's a six-plus-hour-a-week. Commitment. There are some kids that only do it. There are some kids that are still campers and do it. It's a mix of both. Uh, we will have some desk jobs. We'll have, um. Desk camp, pool. Locker room. We have quite a, quite a bit of things this summer, a few different things, um, the pool deck too. We have quite a, quite a bit of things this summer, a few different things, um, the pool deck too. So we only have nine registered right now. In twenty-nineteen, we had more than enough. This year, we don't have enough. So I'm looking to get to the twenty-five number to make the summer go around. But they are vital to the summer program. They help with just about everything. They help with the cleaning, they help of the summer camp staff, they help with the campers, they help in so many different ways. But it's a great way for, because it's a resident-only program. But it's a great way for them to get their feet wet, learning how the community center works, how the programs work.
And responsibility, right?
Responsibility, there is a training involved. We do go through like an eight-page packet. They learn how to answer the phone. I mean, we go through things like, you know, don't take pictures of kids at camp and post them on your social media. I mean, there's just so many things to learn about being employee, wearing your staff shirt. Where should you wear your staff shirt to? How you, should you behave when you wear your staff shirt, which is your L I T shirt? You know, it's logoed and branded, like how should you behave when you're doing that? But it's a great feeder program. We hope to keep these kids in the program for when they're fifteen, take lifeguarding, stay in lifeguarding, work a couple summers, then come to camp, work a couple years and, and then go into internships and think about us on their merry way. But so it's a great program and kids really like it. Every year, we have quite a few kids that come back and back. And eventually, when they're old enough, they usually stay to stick around and work. So it, it's a really fun program and Kaya Scott, many of you know, she always helps to coordinate, to get their schedule together and different things. We've already picked out their shirts and, and everything, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Okay, Summer Day Program, I think you've heard, this fall. Um, if you're interested in camp, be sure to add your child to the waitlist. Um, it doesn't cost anything to waitlist it. There are still openings to the P R swim team, I think you've heard that. Um, you can register online. Danny and I think Shawnee mentioned too, Danny Daughter Luau Pool Party, Friday, June fourth, seven to eight-thirty on the pool deck. Ten dollars per person, limited to the first sixty. That's all I have.
Thanks, Amanda. Um, I just want, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, Kurt, everybody should have gotten the ridger in the mail. That's really a pretty addition. This is the cover. It comes folded like this, so sometimes it's hard to tell. It says resident on the side, but when you open it up, it has all the information here. But it, you know, it talks about on the back, how to get your key tag. And so there's some more information, because we are having, um, a blood drive, but it's just lots of things to go over. So there's, you know, eight pages of good information. It does talk about the water, um, infrastructure, town hall meeting on the twentieth, and then all the way through Summer Day Camp and all of that good stuff in there, so.
Yeah, please, everybody, look at that ridger.
It came in Saturday, Saturday's mail.
Good, yeah. I, I wanted to make mention of the delight that several people expressed when they recognized that the, uh, basketball net and hoop was back up. So that, people were very happy to see that. Even Bill Roush didn't even recognize, realize it'd been put back up and was smiling, so.
Good, and, and we have a new net too, so that one is kind of tattered. So we're, we'll get that up. I, I don't think it came in today's mail. It's, it's on its way, so.
It looked pretty good. It looked pretty good what we had, so.
Yeah, so we'll make sure we get the new one up.
And the pickleballers are very busy over there, so all is, all is, all is good.
Yeah, and the bathrooms are open over at Gainesboro. It's remained very clean and stayed very busy. So everything is looking good over at Gainesboro too.
Everything, everything looks good.
And the patio furniture at the community center has been out. It's out as of today at Gainesboro. The spring has sprung.
Good, good. Okay. Uh, next item is, on the agenda is the consent agenda and I, and it's pretty standard. I just wanted to mention, not to, to do other than mention, is we have a resolution declaring May twenty-twenty-one as Mental Health Awareness Month. Um, I will save reading the, the resolution, but just to know that we are recognizing formally Mental Health Awareness Month in May. So I'm gonna ask if there's a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Your Honor, um, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Is there support? Okay, any discussion? Okay, Amy, can we have, take a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Next, yes.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I did have one quick question. You know, there had been some questions, um, in the community, a little bit about the, um, the request by the Seventh-day Adventist Church to solicit door-to-door, um, through, um, a certain period of time. And I know I spoke with the city manager about, um, people were questioning why, um, they, they were allowed to, to, to solicit in the city. Jim, do you have, um, can you tell them what you told me?
We have to.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can't really turn them down. Soliciting is, is one of those activities that's, uh, protected under the First Amendment. So, um, there's not much we can do.
No, thank you.
Actually, no, there's really nothing we can do, so.
Nothing we can do.
No, thank you for clarifying that. I think that'll help people understand. And, you know, that, they are always very nice people whenever I've encountered them. But also that, you know, we can also just not enter your door, so. That's the good option. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, thanks, Ann.
Sure.
Next item on the agenda is the inter-local, inter-local agreement between the City of Pleasant Ridge and the City of Ferndale for inspection services. Jim, can you give us a little bit background?
Sure, um, this is an update to our contract with the City of Ferndale. Um, as you know, we've been using the City of Ferndale for our building department services for about a year now. Um, it's worked out very well. Uh, we're very happy with it. Um, Ferndale also uses Safebuilt as a contractor, uh, to provide some of the, um, actual inspection services. So the plumbing inspector, the mechanical inspector, those are Safebuilt employees. Um, Ferndale employs their own building official and their own administrative staff. Um, and then they use Safebuilt for the actual inspections. Um, Ferndale's contract with Safebuilt hasn't been updated in a number of years. And so Ferndale and Safebuilder are in the process of, uh, renewing that contract. Um, it included, um, some rate increases. They haven't increased the rates they've charged Ferndale for, um, almost a half decade now. And, uh, they're significantly below market rate. So our, uh, inter-local update incorporates those changes, um, as Ferndale just passes through the cost to us. So we've been getting a good deal. Now we're paying a market rate deal, um, for, uh, the building inspection services. The net impact for this, uh, will be a few thousand dollars a year to what our costs are. Um, it's not a major cost increase. And, uh, every year, when we go through and, and at the end of the year, look and make sure that our permit fees are covering our building permit, um, building department costs, uh, we'll, we'll do that math. And if we need to raise building permit fees as a result of any increased cost from Ferndale, we will, but we don't think we'll have to. Um, and our building permit fees haven't been raised in the last, I think, four or five years. So it's been a while since we had to raise those too. Um, but, uh, we don't anticipate any issues with this. And, uh, it's, uh, pretty much just a, a mechanical thing to pass through a new Ferndale contract with Safebuilt. Happy to answer any, any questions anybody has on this or any of our building department services in general, I guess.
Yeah, does anybody have questions for Jim?
It seems pretty straightforward.
Right, right. Okay, without any further questions, I'm going to ask if there is approval, an authorization of the inter-local agreement.
Mayor, I move the inter-local agreement between the City of Pleasant Ridge and the City of Ferndale for inspection services be approved and that the mayor be authorized to sign the inter-local agreement.
Is there support?
Support.
No further questions? May we take a vote, please, Amy?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Uh, the next item is the city manager's report. Jim?
Thank you. Um, I will, Shawnee mentioned it, but I will mention that next week, uh, Tuesday, April twentieth at seven P M, we are having a town hall meeting. Uh, we have been, uh, pushing out information about the upcoming water infrastructure project that we have to do now, uh, that we're being required by the state to begin. Uh, it was in the, um, the January edition of the ridger, we had some information. There was a mailer that went out to every house, um, notifying everyone of this. There was another notice in the, uh, the recently, uh, delivered April ridger. Um, so hopefully, everyone's gotten the word about this and has a chance to come to that town hall meeting where we'll explain exactly what the project is, what it's gonna cost, how we can pay for it, um, all of those various questions. Um, other than that, uh, springtime is coming, so you'll see brilar around town. Last year, we had sort of a, um, maybe forty percent of what we normally do in terms of ground maintenance and landscaping. But we're happy that, you know, we'll be getting mulched and everything starting next week. So looking forward to starting the spring process. Um, the, um, HydroCorp meter replacement project continues. Um, I know that there's been some discussions about some people who had issues with their water shut-off valve in the basement. Um, that's really been the only issue we've run into. Uh, swapping out a meter is a, is a pretty simple process. It's just held in by two nuts and you unscrew them and then you take the meter out and put it in and then screw it in. Um, the only place we really run into issues, uh, with that is when the shut-off valve, which is in between the service line and the meter, when that shut-off valve breaks, uh, HydroCorp can't replace the meter until that's fixed. And the, uh, the shut-off valve is the homeowner's property. It is the homeowner's responsibility to maintain that in good working order. As a practical matter, uh, many of us never, ever use or turn those. And the last time, I suspect that a lot of those were, or some of those at least, were, were, were operated was probably twenty-five years ago, when the last time we did a meter replacement project. So when you have a hundred-year-old, uh, or seventy-five-year-old, or whatever the case may be, valves, um, that are only turned every, every so often, um, sometimes they break. Uh, and that's really the only issue we've been running into. And it's not been an issue in very many of the, uh, of swap-outs. I think we've completed, um, close to a hundred and fifty. Amy, do you know, remember what that number was for how many we completed already? We just got the update from, uh, HydroCorp today. I haven't committed it to memory yet, obviously.
Okay, so they have done, um, two hundred and thirty-five of them to date. And there is five hundred and seventy-eight appointments, so.
And, uh, I think the, you know, the instances of, of, you know, them not being able to change a meter out because of issues with the shut-off valve, uh, is a small percentage of the overall number. So, you know, while it may seem like there's lots of problems out there, really, it's going very smoothly. Uh, what we would suggest is, is, uh, if you are a homeowner, uh, and you have an upcoming, or actually just in general, uh, but if you have an upcoming meter replacement appointment, go downstairs, uh, turn on a faucet in the basement, uh, your laundry, uh, laundry tub or something else. Turn that on so the water's running and then go and shut off the, uh, shut-off valve that's before your meter. Um, sometimes you'll have a shut-off valve on both sides of the meter. Make sure you're turning the one that's on the service line side. Shut that off and just make sure that the water stops at the faucet you've opened. And then you know that everything's in good working order and, and you'll be ready for your appointment. And, uh, HydroCorp won't have to reschedule with you then. I think that's it. So we're looking forward to a fuller agenda in May and, uh, what should be a smoother meeting, I hope.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, any, any questions for Jim? Okay, then we'll move on to other business. Does anyone have other business?
I have other business, Mister Mayor.
Okay, good.
Um, it's about the, uh, election on November second. We have two city commission seats and the mayoral seat will be up for election this November. Um, nominating petitions are due by July twentieth at four P M. And they'll be available here in City Hall next week on Tuesday, the twentieth. That's ninety days roughly before the election. Um, and then they can be turned in anytime between when they're issued and, uh, July twentieth.
So July twentieth is the drop-dead date for?
Yep, July twentieth is the drop-dead date for the petitions.
Okay, good. Any questions for Amy? No? All right. Anything else before I ask for a motion to adjourn? So quiet. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Hey, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.